Barbara Pio, I'm sitting in for Chairman Conrington who couldn't make it today. So let's get started. We have our un-audited presentation first.
May I just direct you if you have ads in front of you? The Broom CC-FS draft is the actual audit report.
Okay.
So if you click on that PDF, it will load.
You've got it.
And I believe the Bonadillo representative is right there.
Okay.
Here. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Great, I'm gonna share my screen. We just have a short presentation, we'll go through it. I won't go through the whole financial statement. Can you see that screen?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm Joe Hero, I'm a principal, I'm responsible for the audit of the community college. I've been doing the audit, geez, I'm gonna say five or six years now. So I'll just go through where we stand. I know there are drafts in front of you and I've got a couple of things we'll talk about as we go through them. The scope of our services, we conducted an audit of the financial statements in accordance with government auditing standards. There's also a report on internal controls and compliance that's also in accordance with government auditing standards. And that report relates solely to the financial statements. Then there's a uniform guidance audit of the federal program expenditures. And then included in that, there's another internal control report. There's one that's the same exact report for the financial statements and another one relating to specifically federal expenditures. So we'll touch on that and then there's required communications. I don't think I sent that draft, but that's just a standard letter and I'll just go through what's in it. Nothing abnormal in there this year. It's similar to last year's. So in summary, we anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion that the financial statements are presented fairly in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. This is the highest level of assurance that we can give. And then there's a management's discussion and analysis right after the report. It's probably ten, twelve pages long. That's done like it says by management, just goes through highlights of the year and things to look forward going in the future that could affect the college. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal controls over the college's financial reporting. We anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion on compliance for major federal awards. And I'll talk about what those were when I get past the financial section. We did not identify any material weaknesses in internal controls. The draft you have, we have no findings. And right now, we're working with our IT people and your IT people. There is a significant deficiency, has a right now. You know, the wording sounds horrible, significant deficiency. That relates to the Graham Leach-Bliley Act, we'll talk about that momentarily. But it's not as bad as it sounds, I hate to use that word, significant deficiency, but that's what we have to call it. And then of course, thanks to Jeanette and Julie and the Financial Aid Office and everybody else that helped us to get through the audit and then able to present today. So the financial highlights, the statement of net position on pages fifteen and sixteen. Your net position at the end of August thirty first, twenty twenty-three was six point five million. Fifty point one of that is invested in capital assets. And then even unrestricted net deficit of forty three point six million. You see there the comparable numbers last year, pretty similar. It did improve a little bit this year. But again, that number, that net deficit, it's kind of skewed by the other post-employment benefit liability of thirty three point five million. And then the net pension liabilities of ten point one million. So right there, if you add those two up, that's forty three point six million, that more or less equals your deficit. Those liabilities are determined by the actuary. And, you know, I hate to, I don't want to say paper, it's a paper entry, but it's kind of a paper entry. You know, if the college were to go out of business tomorrow, sure, that's what you would owe. But it's kind of, it's an actuarial liability. There's some deferred inflows and outflows that also affect that. But again, that net deficit is caused by those two numbers that are actuarial estimates. The statement of activities on page eighteen, your net position increased two point one million this year, last year you two point nine, so fairly comparable. Total operating revenue for twenty twenty-three, fifteen point seven million this year, sixteen point four last year. I just highlighted some things there that changed, basically betting back and forth, but tuition and fees not funded by student aid decreased. Then tuition and fees funded by student aid, that increased by the same number. Exchange grants and contract revenue, three hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar increase. Federal exchange grants and contracts decreased seven sixty-four. And then state and county grants increased eight eighty-one. And then your operating expenses for twenty twenty-three, fifty three point five million, decreased two point nine compared to last year. And again, that OPEB liability and the pension, the change in the pension liability are affecting that number yearly, basically. But this year you had an OPEB gain. And then last year you had a pension, or in two twenty twenty-three, had a pension gain also. So again, those paper numbers are affecting that, that overall number. Also, non-operating revenue decreased thirty eight point four million. Big chunk of that is the federal aid related to COVID nineteen, the HERF funds, seven hundred and ninety thousand this year. Four point seven million last year. You know, a big chunk of that last year was four point five million in lost revenue. You know, that's gonna go down every year. Excuse me, as those HERF and other COVID-related funds go away, your federal, your federal expenditures will also decrease accordingly. Your county appropriations increased six hundred and thirty-eight thousand. Interest income and refunds of prior year expenses, four hundred and thirty-four thousand. That interest income, that changes, you know, pretty much across the board, we've seen it. Colleges, school districts, all the governments, you've all had great returns on your investments this year. So that's, that's what's causing that increase. And then your state grants and contracts increased two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And again, I'm going fast, but if you have questions, you know, when we get to the end or if you want to just yell them out, let me know. I'm gonna jump to the yellow book report, the internal control report. No material weaknesses or significant deficiencies were reported. And no instance of non-compliance material to the financial statements. Again, that's just related to the financial statements, not your federal awards. So the uniform guidance report, the single audit is what it used to be called, still what we call it. Total federal expenditures, twenty point nine million this year, thirty-two point zero million last year. Again, that's, that's all the federal COVID money going away. Her funding this year, eight hundred and ninety-four thousand thirteen point three last year. So you can see the big change as that kind of dwindles away. Next year it'll probably be nothing or close to zero. Major programs tested, we had to test student financial aid cluster in the COVID nineteen education stabilization, stabilization fund. And then report on compliance for each major program. Unmodified opinions, so you had no issues with the financial, the federal expenditures. Unmodified opinion, again, the highest level of assurance we can give, no material weaknesses. And right now, as I said, it's not in the draft you have, because we're trying to work it out. Your IT people and our IT people. Right now, there's a pending finding related to the internal control over financial, or over the major federal awards, the Graham Leach-Bliley Act. And that deals with the student financial aid. Basically, the Graham Leach-Bliley Act, you have to conform with federal regulations as if you were a financial institution. And one of the issues that they, that they want you to address is a risk assessment. And then there are a bunch of things that go along with that risk assessment. And right now, it doesn't look like, you know, as far as our understanding as it is right now, the college did not necessarily comply with all those. But we're trying to make sure that's correct, we don't want to give a finding if it's not a finding. So I know we were emailed this morning some issues, hopefully to resolve. But we'll see if we can resolve all of them and get rid of that finding and keep the draft as it is without a finding. But there's no question cost. It's just a, you know, they want you to have this in place to prevent any kind of issue with IT, what do I want to say? Somebody getting a hold of information, your financial information that they shouldn't have, or students' financial information. So that's the question with that and we'll try to get that straightened down. Maybe we can alleviate the finding and keep the draft as it is with no finding. And then the required communications, same as every year, this year the college adopted GASBY ninety-six. Says leases, I have a typo there, it should be Sabitas, which are subscription-based information technology agreements. Same thing as leases, if they go out past a year, you're required to now bring on an asset, a liability, and then amortize that asset. Not a material number, but we did implement it this year. And then the regular, the other stuff after that is regular wording that is consistent with every audit we do, it's a standard letter. No transactions for which there was a lack of authoritative guidance. We talked about your estimates, all of your estimates were reasonable. No significant, significant difficulties, no disagreements with management. We are not aware that management consulted with other accountants. And our discussions with management were in the normal course of our professional relationship. And that's it. Questions?
Any questions? Saying none.
Perfect. So like I said, we'll try to work out that Graham Leach-Bliley Act risk assessment and see if we can take what was provided to us this morning and maybe alleviate our concerns and get rid of the finding. I know we had questions a couple of years ago about it and we really were able to alleviate it. So hopefully we can do the same and we don't have to have a finding.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Informational items, President of the Board.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow trustees. This is the legislative season, so I have been back and forth to Albany. Summoned to speak on behalf of the SUNY Chancellor to meet with our assembly persons, as well as working with our state senator on several significant pieces of legislation, as well as our SUNY budget and the SUNY Broom local budgets. And we've been very busy. Not as exciting an outcome in the end, but I do believe that a lot of our advocacy work, the stage has been set for future advancements in, in next year's advocacy setup. It was a very exciting session for me, my first in the state of New York. And I learned an awful lot about how the sausage is made in New York State. I want to thank everyone who attended this morning's ribbon cutting ceremony for our Hope Center, which is our former Broom closet and student pantry. It was a really outstanding event. We had an opportunity to, to thank Avangrid, one of our significant partners that helped us to create and redesign a couple of classrooms to house the Hope Center. And it was very well attended, I want to thank trustee Testani and Chair Conrington, who came to join us. And I don't see Lori Brewer here, but we met Lori at the last, two meetings ago, where she presented to us, went over for a visit of the new center. And she presented to us kind of the stages and steps to bring this to fruition. This is Women's History Month, March, and we're honoring the remarkable women who've made an impact on our college, our community, and our country. The theme for this year's Women's History Month is Women Who Advocate for Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion. And throughout the month, we have made available short bios and photographs of employees and members of our community. Thus far, we've had Leah Martindale, or sorry, Lee Martindale, Melissa Martin, Dr. Christine Mardiacola. Soon will be Dr. Penny Kelly, I saw you taking your photographs today, exciting. Marie Finelli, Vanessa Rodriguez, Dr. Lee Heron, and Dr. Carol Ross Scott. They are featured in a social media campaign to show how we strive to lift up all women and to especially honor those that have empowered representatives from underrepresented marginalized groups. We have had our second supervisors' meeting to get a better understanding of how finance, human resources, and payroll operations function. And Vice President Sullivan also presented the twenty twenty-five budget and forecast. So this is an opportunity for people who have supervisory responsibilities in their job descriptions to get a better understanding of the operations of the college. And so far, those conversations have been very beneficial for supervisors. They're able to do their jobs and hopefully answer questions with great knowledge and authority while administering their supervisory functions. The twenty twenty-four, twenty-seven strategic planning process continues with weekly meetings in our preparation of the development of goals and themes and strategies. We have heard from Dr. Kelly on the academic master plan. We heard from Vice President Sullivan on the budget forecast. We heard about DEI initiatives from our president's task force of diversity and inclusion presented by Dr. Carol Ross Scott. Daniel Britton presented on workforce development. Stacy Duncan from the Chamber did an overview of chamber activities for us. And Jesse Wells presented on the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan. All of this has been great information for us as we move forward in the development of themes, priorities, and strategies. So we are, I believe we are on track to have some really thoughtful conversation over the next couple of months. At what point we will have enough information where we'll be able to flush out the details and specifics of the master plan. And we hope to have the plan available for review and approval by the board in August. So we are moving right along. I want to announce and acknowledge that the SUNY Broom's twenty twenty-four Chancellors Award for Student Excellence will be presented to Brandy Banses and our trustee, student trustee Alejandro Shabaria Gonzalez. So the two of them. They have been recognized as our two Chancellors Awards for Student Excellence recipients. And they will be given their rewards in Albany with about two hundred other SUNY students. Let's see. Upcoming, next week is spring break. So many of our faculty and students are going to be taking a nice pause and break from activities and recuperate, re-energize, and refocus for the big push when they return to the, on the back nine of the spring semester. Shortly after that, on April the fourth through the ninth, I'll be attending the American Association of Community Colleges Annual Meeting in Louisville, Kentucky. And I'll have an opportunity to participate in both a new CEO's Academy. So all new presidents have been invited to participate in pre-conference sessions. And I will be recognized as a new president at the Hail and Farewell Luncheon at that event. So we're saying hello to the new presidents and saying goodbye to those presidents who are retiring. I'm looking forward to representing the college on that stage. And while I'm gone, but please want to encourage everyone to give some thought and consideration to coming to our campus. On April the eighth is the solar eclipse. And we've been doing several activities around marking that event. Having some outside fresh air activity while engaged in this three and a half minute phenomenon. And, and hopefully there will be, there's a pre-ecclipse event that's happening on the weekend before. And then hopefully we'll be able to share in that experience as a, as a college community when it actually occurs on April the eighth. And with that, that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, College Senate, Erin?
Madam Chair, Erin is sick, so her report.
I'm sorry?
Erin is sick and her report is in the packet, she won't be here to present.
All right, moving on, one point three, Student Affairs.
Hi, good, good afternoon, everybody. Your, the report is in your packet, but this month, I really want to highlight the Childcare Center. I feel like about this time last year, everything imploded about the Childcare Center. But woo, we've been on a great ride, thanks to the support of Academic Affairs, Lonnie and Lisa Straley to us, and with the hiring of our new director, Nicole McMillan, who I want to introduce to everybody who will share where we are and where we're going with the Childcare Center.
Good evening, everyone. Just give her a second. I just made a short little presentation for everybody. So I just kind of want to introduce myself a little bit. I'm Nicole McMillan, and I have been in the early childhood field for about fifteen years. I've been a director for about nine years, I have a lot of experience in a short time. Because I had a very large center that I was in charge of previously, and it taught me a lot. And I was under somebody who had twenty years' experience for a really long time. So that's really something that's great, because we don't see a lot of the directors coming into the field. They don't have that opportunity to be under somebody that has so much experience. I graduated from SUNY Broom, so I got my associate's degree in early childhood. And then I went to Binghamton University and got my degree in human development. Right now, I'm working on the NACI CPAC program. So this is kind of our first step into trying to work towards accreditation. It's something I was working on before I got here. But then, when I got here, it just kind of motivated me more and I feel like my load's a little bit less than it was before, so I have more time to work on it. And I'm really learning a lot. It's a lot of, you know, budgeting stuff, managing stuff, a lot of stuff that I already know, but it's giving me some new, like, tips and tools to use. We did just hire an assistant director, so the center did not previously have an assistant. So the center did not previously have an assistant director. They had like a program person, a coordinator. We really felt like this was the direction to go, because we want to have a good succession plan. I think before, they were missing that. You know, if something happens to me or I win the lottery, we want to have that person that knows all the things. As a manager, I'm very much a 50/50 kind of person. This person is going to be my right hand. Everything that I know, I expect them to know as well. So like I said, if I just kind of am not there, they can pick up right where I left off. She's going to start April 1st. Her name's Alicia Canilio. She has, she's an assistant director right now at another center. But her experiences are what is going to make this center really thrive for our student parents and for other parents that might need services. She has experience with CPS, and she worked in residential homes for troubled youth. So she has a binder of, you know, resources that she can offer the parents and the children. She has her master's in early childhood and childhood education. We're really excited for that. Last year at this time, there is a typo in the report I wrote, so this is the correct information. Last year at this time, there were 43 children enrolled. Right now, we have 48 children. So it went up just a little bit, but every child counts. And 50% of those were student parents, and 67% are those of student parents right now. So I got last year's information off the block grant, so I'm hoping that's pretty accurate. My goal is to have 100% of the spaces filled in the fall. This is something I typically was pretty good at in the past. There is a kind of a different obstacle here with students, because we have more part-time spaces. But because there's such a crisis right now for early childhood, I really feel like we can fill these spots, give them enough time. And so some things that I'm doing to try to create more awareness, because as I was advertising for these openings, a lot of people are saying we didn't even know that this center was here. So we need to kind of make it more aware. So we have been sending campus-wide emails, letting people know what openings we have. And I'm also creating pamphlets, so hopefully, we can put those like in the administration offices and that kind of stuff. Just make sure that people know that this is an option. So this year, some of our policies, we implemented a new contract. When I got here, I noticed that there were parents, so I started in November. There were parents that had not made a single payment since September. We didn't even know how the tuition was getting covered, if it was getting covered by the block grant, if they were getting covered by DSS. They were supposed to go to DSS and apply, but they hadn't gone there yet, and it's not retroactive. If you, like, they'll be retroactive if you put in your application to DSS at that point, but they can't go before you put in the application. That was a huge problem to me, obviously. Tuition now has to be established before the child can start. So I want the block grant application. I want the DSS approval letter before the children can start. So we're on better, better financial, yeah. And then, so the lunch program started on the 11th. It's been, it was a little difficult to get started, but we're there now. This is kind of my temporary fix. Eventually, I would like to start making lunches in-house. But right now, we're using the Rockon Cafe through the Binghamton Schools. So I go and pick it up every single day, and the kids have a hot meal. I think, you know, that was really something that I was shocked, that we didn't have lunches being served to our kiddos. A lot of, some of the parents that are students here, they can't afford food. And so their kids were coming to school with no lunches. And so they're eating like a peanut butter jelly sandwich every day. A quality program has a hot meal for their children every single day. So we're on that path now. We implemented a parent committee. We meet monthly. And they are there to kind of discuss policies and procedures a little bit. And they're also helping with fundraising and special events. We are now participating in Quality Stars. So the inventory for this program was submitted before I got here. And the outcome's not outstanding, but that's okay, because it's really exciting for me, because we can score even better. We have 18 months to kind of bring up the score. And so I'm very hopeful, and it's a challenge for me. The highest I have gotten is a four star. So I'm pretty confident that I can get to the five star. And then we started a formal gym class for the preschool. So this was really important for me too, because there's not a lot of large motor down there that's inside. And that's when you start to see behaviors pick up and things like that. And so this helps to provide a unique activity for children and also provides experience for the sports study interns. So they're helping us, they're working with Heather Hoffman to implement or write lesson plans. And then they're putting them in place. And then we were accepting infants at six months, and now we're accepting infants at six weeks. So we can support even more people with younger kiddos. This is some of the equipment that Quality Stars purchased for us, so this is a huge part of the program. I know in the grand scheme of things, it's not a lot of money, but for a small center that doesn't have money to spend and needs a lot of updating, they have already purchased $4,500 worth of equipment for us. So they have bought cubbies, because the old ones were out of reach for the children. They were way higher than the kiddos are. They built the infant equipment over there so that we can start having younger kiddos. And they can put them in there to kind of keep them safe, because the infant rooms, they have children from six weeks to 18 months. So that's just kind of a safe place for the infants. And then they have an infant climber, so that they're getting some large motor as well. This is just a couple of pictures of our gym class and some activities that they're doing. So this is kind of a little bit of a taboo topic over at the center. I really want to move to being open during the summer. For a few reasons. So childcare is a critical topic right now. And Shenango Bridge, which is right down the road, is in an extreme childcare desert. The community in whole is not in trouble right now, but Shenango Bridge in a childcare desert, that means they have zero to less than 40 spots for all the children. So I sit on a lot of meetings, legislative meetings, and we talk about what the solution is going to be. And I work at a center that's not open during the summer. So I feel like to support the community, we have to try to work towards being open. Also, our student parents would be able to take some summer classes if they're available for them. And our parents have expressed that the summer is really difficult for them to find childcare. And then sometimes they leave and they go to other centers because they need the childcare, and then we lose them. And then I'm hoping that this would help to bring additional funds to help balance the budget. Because in the summer, we're still paying out money, and we have no income coming in. So it doesn't really make a lot of sense budget-wise to be closed. So yeah, that's just my thoughts. The teachers are not jumping at it. And so I knew that was going to be the case when I came here. And I'm trying to be respectful of them as well, because they have been here for a long time. You know, the teachers, some of them have been there for 30 years, 18 years, 15 years. We have some money from the Workforce Retention Grant, and we're thinking about offering a bonus for those teachers who would be willing to work. And the ones that are not, I'll have to hire some temporary people. I'm hoping to have an answer by the first week of April, what we're going to do. As far as grants, so before I got here, I had worked with the Urban League, because they got a significant grant from Schumer's office. And so I contacted them, and I was like, you know, I'm over at the PC Center now. Would you be willing to give us a little bit of money? And they did. So we got $10,000 in the fall, which is less than I was hoping for. But I'm happy for whatever we can have. And then they said that they would be willing to give us another $10,000, possibly more, after March. This went directly towards the fringe benefits, since the fringe is kind of what's sinking the program. And then OCFS, this is kind of like my dream. So I know it's a little bit maybe unrealistic. And I know it's going to be very hard and very competitive, but I can't not try. So OCFS is, Howko announced that they are putting money into childcare again. And this way, one of the ways that they're going to do it is by offering this childcare capacity or capital program. And we have to apply by May, and it's between 500,000 and 1.5 million. So it's pretty significant for our little center. And you can use it for construction, renovation, and updates. And I would like to possibly add two classrooms, which I know that sounds crazy because of our budget. But I have some ideas to kind of, you know, balance it, and I'm hoping this would help. Part of the thought is, I have already talked to Binghamton School District about possibly bringing in a UPK program for 2025. And so they will pay us to have spots there. And I have a very good relationship with the person that's in charge of the program, and she feels like we can do this. And then what I would like to do is have half of Binghamton students, so it's only eight, which Binghamton's hard, because they don't have transportation to get here. So I think eight is a realistic number. And then the rest of the classroom can be self-pay spots for those children who did not get into the home districts. This is a model that I have used before, and parents are looking for self-pay options, because some of the districts don't offer UPK. And then when UPK is not in session, I would like to have a school age program over there. Because there is a need for that, and school age is what balances the budget in early childhood. Infants, you're always going to lose money. There's no pathway you're going to make money on infants, but it's necessary, because it feeds the program and it helps the community. So if we have school age, that ratio is so high that it helps kind of balance that infant part. And then the big dream is to build a sensory gym. So this is something that we do not have in our community right now. It'll open up so many opportunities for many of the students in different programs. So not just the early childhood, but, you know, the PT department, the social work students over at BU. It's something that is unique. And I have pictures, so I'll show you guys what I'm talking about. And then I would like to renovate the kitchen, the kitchen and other small projects throughout the center. The kitchen is just kind of key, because I really want to start making more, better quality lunches and that kind of stuff. It'll save us some money instead of purchasing them. The C campus, we did not get it this year, but we're hoping to reapply this year. And it's like 400,000 for two years, I believe, is what it is. The piece that they were kind of missing out is the impact piece, which to me, I feel like we can hit that pretty easily. And then I am hoping to apply for United Way funds as well. I've had a relationship with United Way for a long time, and I kind of know, you know, what is needed for the grants. And previously, I couldn't afford the salaries where I would, where the last center I was at. And so I use United Way funds to kind of cover the cost. So I'm hoping if we can get some of that money to help cover the salaries and the fringe benefits as well, and they'll be around December. So this is what I'm talking about with the sensory gym. So as you can see, it's pretty cool. And it gives the kids a lot of different opportunities. The other part about early childhood is that the teachers are burning out so fast, because the behaviors are significant. You know, we're dealing with the COVID babies right now. Their parents don't have time to kind of invest in them. They're working from home all the time. They're on their devices all the time. And so the needs are so great. There, there's a lot of sensory, OT, PT, speech. And they're getting services, and this would help open the door for therapists to come work with the kiddos there. And just on a regular basis, they can kind of get what they need out of this room. So, and my whole thing about being in early childhood is I really want to make a magical environment. And so doesn't that just look like magic? So that's my whole goal. I want people to walk into the BC Center and be like, wow, it's magical here.
Thank you.
So as you can see, we're on a great path. And I really appreciate Nicole being on the team. I look forward to the impact that the Childcare Center will have on our student parents. We've come a long way in a year, and for me, a lot of it has to do with Michelle's passion and her knowledge and expertise and willingness to hit the ground running. I think we're in a very good space. Thank you, and that's my report.
Is staffing the main issue on why you're not open during the summer?
Yes.
And what's, you have 48 people, what's the capacity?
The capacity.
You have 48, 48 kids starting now.
We have 38 kids enrolled. On our place, we can have 42 at a time. So the 48 is because there's part-time openings and split.
So you're pretty much at capacity.
We have two open preschool spots that are 48 a week. The rest of it is completely full.
Okay, thank you. Foundation, Kathy? I'm sorry? Oh, I am so sorry. Our student assembly, I apologize, I apologize.
So first, I wanted to mention that the SUN Assembly is doing pretty good. For being active, and we have a few spots we have to fill out. We recently attended, just like President Hawkins has been Albany, we visited Albany for the SUN SUN Assembly Advocacy Day. And what it is, is basically the SUN SUN Assembly hosted an advocacy day in Albany so we could talk to legislators, and we got to talk to Senator Leo Webb. And then one of the legislative analysts for Senator Michelle Hinchey. So that was a really cool experience. We got to talk to them about some different things, such as increased funding for EOP, increased eligibility for TAP. And we also talked about the 97 million that we're fighting for through the NYCTCT. And they both heard about it, and they both supported it, so it's really good. And we also got to talk to other people that we found along the way. And we are also attending the SUN SUN Assembly Conference in April 19th. And that's where all the SUN assemblies that participate join in. And we have general assembly meetings, and we also want different policies and resolutions that we want to adopt through the SUN Assembly. And then some concerns I wanted to bring up was, first of all, the dining hall. And now as a resident, as an RA, I live in the dining, I live in the village, so I understand what it's like a little bit. And the SUN Assembly has a dining hall committee, which is open to every student on campus. And what that is, is basically the managers of the dining hall, as well as some assembly members, such as Eva, who is our PPO Sun Affairs, who is here with me, and she chairs it. And basically, they talk about issues for the dining hall, things that we want to see. It's been a very nice space for, you know, them to get like a student input, student voice on the dining hall. But we've, even though that's been going for over a semester, we've been finding it really hard, because they have been, they have implemented great things. They've been listening to things such as accommodations for allergies and things like that. Kind of worked forward, but there's still things that I feel like we really have to work on. And first up, something that Eva's been working on really hard has been accommodations for students who require halal food. And halal food requires, you know, different preparations and some extra things. But some staff have been very, it's been very hard to work with them, because there are still precautions that are not being taken, and like mixing chicken and beef and things like that. When, you know, students request to have one, and like, people touch things with different materials or gloves not changing, and just like, in general, just kind of like, the hygiene regarding that is not really good. And then, for example, and then this kind of time right now is when Ramadan is, Ramadan. For example, and then this um kind of time right now is when Ramadan is, Ramadan is going on. And Eva's been working with them to provide meals when sundown comes. Which is when students who are participating Ramadan are allowed to eat, are allowed to break their fast. And it's been nice that they've been able to provide these kind of like meal kits for them. But we're asking for very specific items, and sometimes they have one, sometimes they have all of them. But they've been super wishy-washy, which is not very nice, given that, you know, these students need this food. And these students who are not eating until around like seven PM every day, they, they're most likely not getting any food before that. So I don't think it's any extra load on the dining hall to begin with. If these students are really only like getting one meal. So we've been very, very consistent about this, and we've been trying so hard to get them to work with us. And it's tough to see them only doing some of the stuff that they promised. And I think we owe every student a meal when they need it. And some just thinks about the dining hall, it just feels like. The ways for, like, it seems it's very businesslike. And for a resident who's just trying to eat food that I already paid for, it doesn't feel very nice. Like, a meal is, you get basically a fifteen dollar total, like allowance for a meal. So if a sandwich is ten dollars and then a side, like some mozzarella sticks are five, in theory, you can get those too. And some things are labeled as an entree and then a side, and those usually add up to about fifteen dollars. But there's little things like, if you want double meat on your food, so if I get a salad. And that's eleven dollars, and then I get, I want double meat, which it's just an extra scoop of meat. It's about, I can't remember, it's like four or five dollars, I can't use that. So I can't get like an eleven dollar salad, and then let's say a four dollar double meat and count that as a whole meal. I have to find my extra money to pay for that extra meat. And I've asked them about this, and like the workers were just telling me that, yeah, well, it's like, how do we make money? And it's like, well, that's just not what I wanted to hear. And it's like. I just don't see how little things like that are just proposed, and I just don't feel, I feel like that's like, doesn't make it very welcoming. And then you could use your flex dollars, which is like money that comes from your meal plan, that can use on anything in the dining hall. But we only get like seventy five dollars for that for the entire semester, which is not a lot compared to other schools, which is, gives like hundreds of dollars. So I feel like little things like that make the dining hall experience kind of limiting. And I know a lot of students have been dealing with this. And things that the dining hall committee has been really lucky enough, but it's just been kind of hard to work through that. And then moving on from the, the math lab hours and just the staffing and things like that. It's something that we've been talking about forever. And I know um our president's in assembly, I was talking with that with Dr. Hawkins, I know it's something that we're looking at. But I, in the past, I've asked about hours being cut and things like that. And I've heard responses such as, well, later at night, there are less students. And maybe one or two or sometimes none, which is true. But I just don't see how cutting any hours of having listeners in different times. Is in any way aligned with our goal of helping every student. And I don't see how cutting hours to save money is any beneficial. If a student can't get any help for the difficult math courses they're taking, and we all know that. Every major has at least one kind of course that involves math or that is, is a math specific course. So I always find it really hard to hear things like, uh, it's like, there's no money or anything like that. But it's like, we should focus on, if we can help one student, that's one more student that gets to graduate. And doesn't have to be for a whole extra semester to take one extra class, or has to go to a different school to take the class over the summer. Little things like that that impact our students, I feel like we can take, we can take a better look into that and really focus on that. And then one other thing that I heard from students when I was asking them. Or um about what they've been seeing on campus, and they mentioned that they realized some trees were being cut down around campus. And I don't know why or um if there are specific reasons, but there's just something that kind of worried them. And some of them are taking biology courses that um utilize the trees, like they go out and look at trees, identify them, things like that. And they realized that some of the trees they were looking at were gone, so that was just like one other thing that. Someone's students were concerned about, so we'll look into that. And then just general, um, how our campus should be more welcoming. Or just look more welcoming is something that I heard, was for example, like basements or areas where, where we have classrooms. Such as the Plating Knowledge Building, the basement, it's very creepy and it's like, um, it's kind of tough to walk around. And they mentioned that they had a class where they talked about having student art and things like that to make it more welcoming and more pretty in general. But that didn't seem to kind of go forward. So I feel like we could work with the whole campus with our classes and clubs and things like that to make those areas more. More interesting and just make it look a little less like a basement, more like an actual place where we take classes. So that's something else uh people brought up. And that's everything.
Thank you.
I have a question, when, when I showed us our student trustee, and we got an issue with the food program. You know, George April said, you know, this has gone on for fourteen weeks and like this. Board got involved, it got resolved within a matter of weeks. Certain thing that we do with the vending company or vendor to hear those concerns. Some of those are serious that really should get addressed.
Yeah, I believe um Michael Stamets was a member of the Food Committee. Who is no longer uh here at the college. Um, and he was really kind of our administrator, administrative voice in. Uh, trying to, to make recommendations and improvements. Um, I know that Dr. Ross Scott is very aware of the limitations of the American Food and Vending Contract. Um, and she has raised these concerns as well, I'm, I'm not sure if you wanna add.
Hmm, I will, I'll reach back out to, to them because they've heard this before. And I didn't know that there were issues with breakfast um meals, um as well as the halal food. I, I, the last time I talked to him, everything was good, so apparently it's not. Um, so I'll get, get back in contact with them.
Okay, thank you.
Your meetings sound terrific, Alejandro.
Thank you. Uh, foundation, Kathy.
Well, my reports in the package, there's all kinds of information um about our financials, our fundraising activities. Uh, as the Hawkins mentioned, we had just a lovely uh recognition ceremony today. And uh there was standing room only literally, um down all the halls and such. But it was just a lovely time, and I certainly know that our special guests appreciated to see. The campus come out in robes to celebrate such a nice day. Um, just wanted to let you know that uh the magazine, we just signed off on the boot. And might have said this before, but I truly believe this is going to be the most amazing magazine in Congress. But I'll leave it to you to let me know what you think. And um actually you'll uh see some in profiles of a few of the special people in this room. Also, just wanna let you know reunion is um happening on. Friday, April twenty sixth, we started the CPC with a server with our retired and current faculty and our alumni. We certainly urge trustees to attend if they can. And then there's a whole school of events on Saturday, which gets coupled with the campus's open house. Um, one special highlight, which is going to be an art gallery presentation, which is being put on by the art faculty. In memory of Robert Keller, the founder of our art program here. And uh, the scholarship application for continuing students has closed. And we are just in the process of reviewing those applications. We had over four hundred applicants, which is really a great thing. And our faculty and staff partners who are going to be helping us review um those uh awards. To make those awards, and we will have that done in a couple of weeks. And then the incoming class of uh students coming from the local high schools is a whole separate pool. And that application will close um at the end of the play week in April. And uh then we will be making all those decisions in preparation for our scholarship event. Which will be held in the ICE Center on May, May sixth, so. If there's no questions, that finishes that part.
Thank you.
Yep.
Facilities.
Neither Dave nor.
I, I see Dave isn't here, I don't know if there's anyone.
David is not here.
Okay.
The report is in.
Or it's in the packet, okay. Michael Sullivan, budget and finance update.
Uh, so in your report is uh the, our monthly, the college's monthly forecast through the end of February. Uh, the bottom line is still the same. We've uh updated our forecast for the enrollment numbers, the revenue numbers. As well as some of the expenses. Uh, now that we have a very good idea of what the spring enrollment numbers uh are going to be. Uh, so other than that, uh. Uh, the rest of the standard reports are in your packet.
Any questions for Michael? Thank you. Media, Jess?
Standard reports.
Thank you. Okay, uh, two point O, approval of minutes, February fifty. Uh, motion Anthony, second, Jim, all in favor? Okay, proposed, and it's approved, okay. Uh, two point one, facilities, and I have, I chaired that. And um, at the standard, everything was approved, so. Do we need a motion to approve this at the report or no? No. No, no, okay. One suggested, no. Preferred agenda action items, four point one. Recommend approval amendment of contract CA ninety nine slash five by five seven oh, Noble Studios Inc. Motion?
Yes, we're gonna take them all.
Madam Chair.
The action items.
Yeah.
Okay, we can move them all together, all on, all together, all right. And is there any questions?
A second.
The other side is it? All in favor?
Alright.
Who made the motion? I care. I think.
Just wanted to recap, like who made the motion in a second.
Okay. Who, who did it?
Jim and Jim.
Jim and Jim. Jim just donated, more man second, sorry.
Thank you.
Action items, can, can we do the, these have to be separated, you know, don't they? Yeah, okay, recommend approval of revised policy SS eight zero zero three, trespass policy. Motion? Jim, second? Questions? All in favor? Any opposition, opposed, motion carry? Recommend the approval of AA four oh one seven student chosen name, pronoun and gender policy.
Madam, Madam Chair, we have um five point two, recommend approval of GA.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing.
Five point two skips.
I'm sorry?
You skipped one, we're in five point two.
I'm doing, that's the second time I did that. Okay, uh, recommended approval of GA two oh one one college closure and cancellation policy. All of, motion?
Both.
Uh, all in favor?
I'll second.
Questions? Motion carry, now five point three. Recommend approval of AA four oh one four student chosen name, pronoun and gender policy. Motion? Second?
Second.
Second? Oh, I thought she, I moved it, oh. Um, all in favor?
Alright.
Pos, motion carry. Alright, five point four, recommended approval of AA four oh fifteen. On our area of guest speaker policy, motion?
So moved.
I'll, I'll second.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pos, motion carry, alright. Alright, recommend approval AA oh one six, repeating courses policy. Motion?
Both.
Anthony, Tina, all in favor?
Aye.
I, opposition, motion carry.
Other question.
Okay.
So, does this policy? Um, so by repeating courses policy, you mean like, after, it says you can take it twice, right? So after that, does that mean like you're not allowed to take it, you're wanting to receive financially, like what's the um?
It's, it's the process of how to take it again, and there are details or specifics, Dr. Keller.
Yeah, and actually you can take it three times, you can take it once and then repeat it twice. So after three times if a student fails, it's, then they would have to seek approval to do it again.
God, okay, so it has nothing to do with financially?
No, it's just, I, I think the concern is that they're eating up and using up that financial aid, so we're trying to, you know, put some measures in place to.
Okay.
Make sure that they get advised and help make good decisions.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Okay, um, motion, there's, there's second now. Repeating courses.
Yeah.
Jim, so just follow the question.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Uh, it, it, okay. Uh, can we just, the questions after, that's my, could be questions after the, it's on the agenda. Or after we approve it for a discussion, okay, thank you. Alright, um.
After the second, right, yeah, after there's a second, we have a question.
Prior approval.
Alright. Five point six, recommend approval of AA four oh seventeen credit for prior learning. I'm not quite sure I think of that.
On page sixty three of the packet.
Motion?
I'll move it.
Jim, second?
I'll second.
Andrew, alright. All in favor?
Aye. Do you wanna, ask questions about it? Do you wanna, do you wanna know what it is? Before you vote.
Alright.
The credit for prior learning is where we give credit, college credit for experiences. That are not experiences related to a course, but you get credit for the course. So students that are in the military may um get credit for cultural competency. Um, students who have a certain proficiency in computers can test and take the challenge exam. And, and get credit for the, the course itself. Um, if they have AP credit, spread for prior learners. Um, so just a variety of mechanisms to get college credit awarded without actually taking the course.
Yeah, so this is called the challenging, the, yeah, I, I have little experience of it. So, alright, um, now, all in favor?
Aye.
The opposed, motion carry. Five point seven, recommended approval of revised policy AA four oh two, credit hour policy. Uh, why don't we put the motion on that we can ask the question before, Anthony?
I'll second it.
Jim? Okay, question?
Because of the credit by prior learning policy, there's new procedures that go with that policy. That make the po- the procedures that are under credit hour policy um redundant and not needed anymore. Cause they are now covered under a new procedure of policy. So it's uh basically a housekeeping, we're deleting it from that policy.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any calls, motions carry, alright. All right, uh, six point O, uh, may I have a motion to enter into executive session? To discuss the college budget and contractual items? I need a motion. Ena? Jim, second, all in favor? Hey, we are in executive session.
Michael Sullivan to stay.
Oh.
For the discussion.
So it's. Thank you.